No, we can't, at least. We can't change what happens in here. Hey, John, if you're ready.
I call to order the May 27 meeting of the Los Alamos Planning Commission.
Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
Commissioner Self-Filcanic.
Here.
All right, would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to oral communications. This is a period to come up and speak about things that are not on tonight's agenda. If you're here to speak on an agenda item, you'll have an opportunity to do so when that item comes up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will close oral communications and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Any comments from anyone? Oh, yeah. So, we'll start with Item A, the minutes for the special meeting, April 27, 2015.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Move on to Item B, the regular minute meetings. I think I had a correction on this. When we called for the vote, it says, the notes here say, "Motion carried six slash zero," and then it says, "Commissioner Lowe cast a dissenting vote." So, it should be...
Which item was that?
Page four.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept with correction.
I will. Victor, do you second?
Commissioner DeBolt.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Now, I'll move on to the consent calendar. Item 6A, resolution of intention, PC 15 down 304. Can I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, thank you very much. Before you, in the next couple of months, we'll be looking at the municipal code in regards to massage. We currently have a moratorium on massage in the city because the state changed their regulations and gave some power back to local cities to amend their codes to make it more enforceable of what happens in massage facilities. So, now, we've got to change our code to abide by state law, and we're currently working on it and drafting it. We have to pass a resolution of intention before that topic can come to you. So, this is that resolution. We're asking you to approve the resolution, and then we'll start working on it at the next meeting. And also, kind of, gives you guys the heads up to start drumming up on this, watching news articles, seeing what you see, start following the industry, and getting ready for these discussions.
Comments or questions for staff? No comments or questions for staff. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion to approve?
Yes, make it so we can bring it back.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. On to public hearings. Item 7A, consideration of a five-unit condominium development. Do I have a staff report?
Yes.
Chair, I have to excuse myself, I have a conflict of interest. I've got an interest in real estate within 500 feet.
Thank you.
With that, Tom Oliver will be providing a staff report on this five-unit development, five-unit condominium development proposed at Walnut and Catalina in the city of Los Alamos in a vacant lot here in Old Town West. With that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Okay. Chair Riley and members of the Planning Commission, tentative track map 1501, conditional use permit 1502, and site plan review 1501 are the consideration of a condominium development project to be located at 10742 Walnut Street. And the applicant's representative, well, the applicants here tonight, Olympia Stapakis and her representative, Nick Zanvichellus, is here as well tonight in the audience. The project will involve the construction of five townhome-style condominium units. All five of the units are in a single building, as illustrated on the screen. The property is a 9,750-square-foot parcel in Old Town West with no existing structures occupying it. The four, there are four floor plans in the, of the five, with the five units. They range in size from 1,670 square feet to 2,102 square feet. The building altogether with the garages is 11,140 square feet. They will all be three-bedroom units with two and a half baths in four of the units and three and a half baths in one unit. The structure will have, will be three stories tall, and each unit will have a private garage. Outdoor space will be provided for each unit in the ground floor, private yard area. The project is a residential development plan, which requires a site plan review. The proposed project would be located in the R3 multifamily residential neighborhood district. The density allowed there is 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The project will have 13 parking spaces in total, which means there's two car, a two-car garage for each unit, and then three other spaces in common areas. The other garage, I mean, this is a carport here for two of the three extra, and then there's one space right there. And then all, of course, all the other units have their two-car garage. And it will be accessed through the alley. The applicant has, will give over to the city, two and a half feet in the alley to expand the alley. We were doing that all around town in the alleys in order for the gas, I mean, the trash trucks to be able to fit easily down the alleys. The building will have, let's get there, the building will have enhanced architectural elements on all sides of the building. It's kind of a classic American architecture, including small porches, siding, shutters, stone elements, multi-pane doors, and projected rafters under the eaves. The units will face the public street sidewalk in a rowhouse sort of fashion for four of the units, the other ones on the end there. There will be three-foot-tall fences enclosing a front yard for each one. The building's facade will include stucco and siding and stone. So, that's, that's the siding, there's the stucco, and then there's stone around the doorways. The code requires the installation of a minimum of 15 percent landscaped area. According to the site plan, the landscape will total 27 percent of the total area. The development needs or, I mean, the development meets or will be conditioned to meet all codes, except for the width of the property. It's excused from that requirement because it's an existing non-conforming lot. It's shorter than it, than the 60, 70 feet required. It's like 65 feet, from what I remember. I'm not looking at it right now. Condominiums also require a conditional use permit under the city's municipal code, and staff has reviewed the project and also made conditional use permit findings as set forth in the code. According to the Government Code Subdivision Map Act and the city's subdivision ordinance, a tentative track map is required also, and the project proposes, that's because the project proposes five or more condominiums, which they're owned as one parcel, but each person owns airspace on that parcel. The Los Alamos Municipal Code also requires a parkland dedication money, which are called quimby fees. And currently, in your, in your agenda, you'll see that it says that we are considering them single-family units at $18,076 apiece for parkland fees. We're going to discuss that later tonight. You do have a letter in front of you from the applicant asking to change that. Prior to the sale of the first condominium, there will be required covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which are called CCNRs. And this ensures, will ensure that not only is the property taken care of in common, but also that the city doesn't have to come in and do a lot of code enforcement. They should be doing it themselves. Staff believes that the proposed tentative track map meets the regulations and the findings for that as well. The project would implement 11 different policies, goals, and actions of the new general plan, so that's pretty impressive. Staff supports approval of conditional use permit 1502, site plan review 1501, tentative track 1501 due to the exceptional layout, design, and architecture of the project. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Can we go back to the drawing, the overhead type? Yeah, that one. What's the 23, put right there against the wall where it's got the six-foot wall?
Over here?
Put it out.
Oh.
You're, you're in the right, right, over to your right.
Over to my right.
There you go, right there.
Just below that.
Yep.
Okay. Oh.
That should be 28 feet.
Oh, that's the 28-foot turning radius in order, from garages, you have to have 28 feet behind the garage.
In other words, there's nothing being built there?
No, no. That just is explaining that there's room enough behind the garages to back up.
Okay.
And do a turn.
Now, I have an issue with the location of the dumpster. I'm assuming we're going to put a dumpster in there?
Yes, right.
And not have them individual trashcans that are going to be lining up in the alleys?
Right.
And will that be acceptable with the contracted agency as far as how they're going to get their truck in to get that dumpster?
I assume, let's see, we'll ask the applicant that when he, if he's checked with them.
And then, I do have a concern too about the unit C. The, is that 10 feet of a drive-in? That's the one against the alleyway?
Oh, this one there?
Yeah. Now, when you look at the 10 feet right in there, cars have a tendency, and your modern cars are bigger than 10 feet.
Right.
Longer. So, they're going to protrude into the alley. Become a problem if they don't park it in the garage.
You're talking about here?
Yeah.
Oh, the, that's not a designated parking space.
But that's...
I mean, it can be.
High probability.
Yeah, I know that, that's true.
And so, we need to make sure that in their CCNRs, that this action, whoever has that unit.
Right.
Is enforced, that they will not be using that to park on. If they extend in the alley, you're going to end up getting hit, or you're going to have problems.
That's, yeah.
So, that's the concern I have with that one unit, is the direction of what they have right there for parking.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions for staff?
There's also a materials board probably being passed around there. There we go.
Is the height in line with the other units that are within that area? I'm trying to remember.
Some of them are, but it's, it's all over the map there. I mean, across the street, there are short, one-story buildings behind it. It's a two-story building, I think, and then, and I think they're all basically two-story.
Double.
Yeah, two-story, yeah. I don't think there's three-story right in the immediate vicinity of that.
The other end there is Walnut and...
Yeah, where, the Old Olson Project.
Walnut and Florista.
Yeah.
Both three stories.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward for questions.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Nick Zanvichellus. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant, Olympia Stapakis. I'm deeply involved in the development of the project. Also appeared before you last year on another project. We're in the process of working with staff on across the way, across the city on Howard Avenue, which we're in plan check. Both projects are similar, similar to design, finishes, colors, elevations. We're trying to keep a, kind of, a similar design to all the projects we do in the city. We've done several others in the past. We usually use these types of materials, kind of the high-grade materials. Tom covered pretty much all the high points on the project. I can address the, the one spot in the alley that Ms. Gross was concerned about. CCNRs on these type of projects generally already say that residents' cars must be parked in their, in their corresponding garages, and that area that you spoke of in the alley would be marked as, it would probably be striped as no parking. You really wouldn't want to park a car there. There's ample parking in the, in the rest of the project for the guest parking that's required for this number of units, and of course, each, each unit has the two-car garage with extra storage space in the garages. So, CCNRs would condition that cars are parked in the garages. If somebody were to park in that spot, it's not a spot, in that area, let's say, behind that garage, they would be in violation of the CCNRs. And either the association could enforce that, or if it became a further problem, I suppose, I suppose the, the association could then call the city for, to help enforce that. But generally speaking, the association's responsible for enforcing things like that. That's about all the high points. If there's any question, I'll be happy answering for you as best I can.
The dumpster and...
Oh, usually what hap, this is all on grade, so there's no, really no appreciable slope between the dumpster and the alley. And in other projects like this, the truck comes down the alley, and there's a guy that comes out and wheels the dumpster out to the alley, they pick it up, and then they wheel it back in. Hasn't been a problem before.
And there will be a dumpster.
Yeah.
How big is that?
Yeah, I don't think you'd want 15 trashcans in the alley.
No, I don't.
That would be, be really ugly. Yeah.
How big is the trash, it just seems so, I mean, there's only four of us in my house, and we fill ours every week.
I understand. These are commercial three-yard dumpsters. We've built other projects. The last project I built had 10 units in it, double the number of units, they have one dumpster, and they don't seem to have a problem.
What do they do with recycling? Because we have separate cans for both.
What the, what the city, what the Consolidated does is, when it's a dumpster, they handle the recycling.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. So, you actually pay on your, on your refuse bill, a recycling fee, and they separate it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Does she currently own the property?
Yes. Anything else? Come on, give me a hard one.
You've thought of every different direction for laying out all of this?
You know...
I've got to figure, I've got to move that trashcan and make it easier on the poor comp, the poor guy that's got to bring it out.
Well, that's our problem.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Well...
In the carport or...
I mean, in theory, it could go...
Over in this area over here.
They'd be a little more ugly from the alley. Be very...
We'll run this by the Consolidated and see if they have any issues. I, they've never had an issue with things like this before. This is a covered area besides, so there won't be the rain falling on it. It'll be, it's actually a pretty convenient spot for the homeowners, too.
And the turning radius, Tom, that's okay for getting out?
Yes, 28 feet is, is perfect. We actually have a bigger turning radius in this town than a lot of towns do, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. I think at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Staff would like to introduce an amendment to one of the conditions to enforce the driveway parking. Number third, number 31F. We'd like to add on to the end of 31F and prohibiting driveway parking.
31F in the condition.
He didn't address it either.
Well, because Thomas said it would be discussed.
I don't think we need to discuss parks fee, do we? That's something we don't have to worry about.
We, we need to address.
Yes. I just wanted, if we needed to.
Go ahead, Victor.
Before we do this?
Oh, either way, whatever.
Just have a motion, right?
Okay. City Attorney...
Okay.
What do you want to do first?
No, no, let's go ahead and...
Okay. The, the city attorney's office has reviewed the letter, has reviewed the staff report and the resolutions back, dating back to 2005, when the parkland dedication in lieu fees were adopted, and we do believe that the appropriate amount to be charged is the R3 fee, not the R1 fee, under that resolution 1990, which would change the fee to 13,412 per dwelling unit times five, whatever that math is. And that commission, that condition should be amended to reflect the proper amount. What condition is that, Steve?
That would be $67,060.
What condition?
For this project. It's...
I think that's eight, oh, eight A or eight? It's, it's under eight.
Yeah. What, what's the number, Tom?
Oh, 67,060.
67060?
Right.
Okay.
Just so everyone's clear, there was a question raised about the designation of this property and whether it was single-family residential or, I think, multifamily. Because we have, we have single-family residential in our, our staff report and our documentation. But this was brought up, the city attorney is stating that, that they believe the correct designation would be the multifamily designation.
Right, this is in the R3 zone, and therefore...
It has an impact on some fees and things, especially with property.
Right.
It's condition number eight under planning. Under the Exhibit A general conditions.
What does that adjust to, Tom?
$67,060. 67060.
Okay.
I was just curious, how come we are nailing down the park fee? Do we nail down school fees? Do we nail down library fees? Do we nail down sewer fees? I'm just wondering why, is this different? Is the parks fee a different fee?
It is different because of parks fees are triggered by a map. If he was not, if he didn't have a parcel map connected to this, there would be no park fee. So, it's really a condition to only the map part. If someone built an apartment building, if he built five units of rental and didn't subdivide the airspace, there would be zero fee because quimby or park fees are only triggered upon the subdivision of a property. And so, that's, and it is our fee. It's not a pass-through fee like a school district fee or a library fee or a sewer or sanitation district fee. It's a fee that was adopted by our city council and enforced by us.
Actually, I'm going to change the whole language of condition eight to simply say, "In accordance with Government Code Section 66477, the park fee shall be as follows." I'm sorry, "In accordance with 66477 and Chapter 1617 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code."
Okay, so, now that we have that cleared up, would anyone like to make a motion?
I, I...
Victor had questions.
I think, didn't we talk about the rules, about...
You're right.
Make a motion, then discuss, and we have something to talk about. So, I'm trying to...
I'll make a motion to accept with the changes that we've just gone through regarding R3 and then the parking.
I have a motion? Do I have a second? All right, so, let's have some discussion around the motion. Yeah? Or do I have to have a second? I think we have to have a second, right?
See, now, we watched that so long ago. There's nothing pending at this point to discuss.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll second the motion.
For purposes of discussion.
I'll second the motion, and now that we have a motion and a second.
Now we can...
Let's, let's open this up for discussion. I think Victor...
Actually, I don't want to discuss it that way so much as to, because it's been so difficult to put five units on parcels here, I took a close look at this, and there were a couple of things that came up that I was questioning, but I believe they're in a general context and not specific to this property, so I'm going to reserve and like to put the discussion off to Commissioner's comment section of this meeting, basically. But, but they deal with, with what's in the matrix, the parcel width, interior panel, and requirement met, and says legal non-conforming. So, I want to have discussion about that. But again, this is more general than property-specific, so I think we can do that later. And the other area I want to discuss is the differentiation between private open spaces under Section 17.34060 and the condominium section, which requires 100 square feet. And what also is evident here under the development standards, I believe it's 17.16010, that's apartment use and it requires 200 square foot. So, I think, I'd like to have some discussion amongst the commissioner with the assistance of staff and have clarification on both those issues, but I think that can be done. The commissioner reports.
Okay.
Okay, just food for thought for everybody. You know, this has been a vacant parcel. I'm sure it's been a vacant parcel for quite a while, so as a city, we'd, we'd like to have something on it. But again, this is a corner lot, which is going to stand out, which, you know, we, we'd like to have something there. But again, this is a three-story, five-unit building. I just wonder if we, you know, when I first came on the commission, you know, was that hype of the real estate market began, and these things were being hammered all over the city, and everybody was approving them. So, I'm just questioning if we really want to put a three-story, very large, very people intensive structure on this property. Now, you can't blame the owner, they want to make as much money as they can, they've used every square foot, that's what they're supposed to do as a developer. But I'm just questioning if this fits the area. I mean, you just look at your photos around, you know, you have single-floor story, two-stories. This one is going, you know, it could be a gorgeous building, which will help the area, but it is going to stand out, it is going to be very large, and it is going to, three-bedroom units is going to put a lot of people in here. Again, you know, is this what we want to do? I'm not saying we don't, I'm saying this is what we want to do as a commission, is to allow this to start happening again when you've got these vacant lots that people are going to... going to, three stories, many people as we can, make as much money as we can.
I tend to agree a lot with you because I see so many of these multiple stories going in. I do know just east of it, I want to say that's two-story, the blue complex, I'm sorry, I just went blank. I think it's two stories. And then just south of it is also a two-story complex. So you've got these two on both sides before you get into the homes. Across the street, you do have small family homes, which I know someday are probably going to get tore down from multiple family units, I'm aware of that part. So in reality, it's not like it is going to be a three-story and then houses right next to it, they're across the street. So in respect to that, it won't be just kind of island there. It does have other complimentary to it, even though I tend to agree with you, I don't like the three stories, except that I can tell you on Walnut and Florista, that is a three-story, and on Chestnut and Florista, that is a three-story. So we do have some in the area. I don't like the underground ones, but these aren't underground, and that's because of the water table, it creates problems for other properties. So I can appreciate your, you know, your concerns, but in this case, I can kind of see this having a potential benefit for the area. I question the architecture, I think it'll be okay, but I know that one unit on the Catalina in Chestnut is not, is the blue unit, and it'll blend with that where the guy next to it, I think is just basically almost a box type unit. It doesn't have a whole lot of character to it, so at least it has some character.
No, I just, you know, you, you, you say that there's three units, or three stories already around there, I'm not saying that's wrong, but if we don't think, we don't want more of them, then we should take a serious look at this. Because the market is, you know, getting better, people are going to do this again, and if we want to make enough, you know, if we want to, if we're okay with this, then, you know, we're okay with it. But this is going to, I think, kind of start hitting again, and is this what we want, is these three stories, you know, dotted all over the place? Not saying yes or no, I'm just, that's my thought, is that we might want to take a serious look at it. Food for thought.
Any other, uh, comments? Questions, discussion? All right, uh, so with that, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Is there an alternative motion, or are we ready to move that forward to a vote? All right, seeing nothing else come forward for a vote, uh, we will vote on the mo, motion that is on the table, which is to approve the project as proposed with the modifications from staff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
So, motion carries.
Five to one.
Congratulations and good luck with your project. And we're going to move on to item 7B, zoning ordinance amendment 15-01.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Tonight before you is zoning ordinance amendment 1501. This is not a text amendment, this is a zoning map amendment in the city of Los Alamos. The 2035 general plan has been approved, you were all part of that. The city council certified the environmental document for that on March 23rd, 2015. In order to bring the, the zoning into compliance with that new general plan, there will be these periodic changes to the map, we're going to bring them to you semi-individually over the next year. This is just the first of the 10 sites that we looked at in the general plan, and so this is two of those sites. The general area is the site you're sitting on here, City Hall site, and then the other area is the industrial site where Monty Collins is and Cottonwood Church is on, on Sausalito Avenue. It also backs up to Cerritos Avenue over there. The, the parcels in question are listed in your staff report, and so are the common names, the addresses, and the zone change of what it is to what it's proposed to be. After tonight's public hearing, you'll open the public hearing, take public testimony, and if approved, it'll move on to the city council, where the city council will act upon your recommendation in the form of an ordinance. Your recommendation is formalized in a resolution that goes to city council. The, again, the projects under discussion are, are site here, including Super Media to our west.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, back, there you go. It includes the sewer district properties as well as the city hall properties, including the recreation property on Oak Avenue. And then the other sites are the industrially, industrially zoned sites on Sausalito. It includes three separate parcels in that area, and that information is in your staff report. We've been fielding questions regarding this site for, for months now, hope for potential buyers of these sites on Sausalito. With that, staff is recommending approval of the resolution in your, in your packet and moving this forward to the city council, but only after you take public testimony from the members of the audience.
Any questions for staff? At this time, I'm going to open the item up for public comment. If anyone would like to come up and, um, speak on this, please do so now. State your name clearly.
Good evening, Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm Kevin Hayes, I am the executive vice president that runs Lincoln Property Company here in Orange County. We are a 50-year-old developer, owner-operator of commercial real estate that controls over 200 million feet nationally. In Southern California, we have a little more than 13 million feet, 5.9 million feet of that's here in Orange County. We acquired 3131 Cotella, sometimes referred to as the Super Media site and components of the general plan to our west here, the neighboring property, from Super Media in a quick transaction in December of last year, 2014. The general plan changes the land use designation under the property and the proposal before us tonight further changes the zoning that ties to that land use designation. The retail use that is being pushed for here today is not feasible. Within your own land use element in the general plan, it states, "With relatively new shopping centers developed in Seal Beach and Cypress, Los Alamos may not soon recover to its pre-recession retail sales. The vast majority of popular big-box retailers are already located in adjacent cities, and Cypress already has land capacity to accom, accommodate, excuse me, additional big-box tenants." It go, goes on to talk and share the types of retail uses that are feasible, more experiential in nature, uh, and, and points to downtown Los Alamos along Los Al Boulevard as the site for that, and further discusses short-term development opportunities with the Super Media and Civic Center site that we're at here today, and says that though the, though it should be not developed to potentially compete with downtown uses. Essentially meaning, the zoning that we're looking for here is the type of retail that is the least feasible for this site. We agree that one day it can be a good retail location, but we also agree with your own general plan and the zoning here that it's not economically feasible in the near term. Over the last several months, we've developed five retail site plans, mounds of underwriting, and have had over three dozen tenant conversations on the retail front, have had four sets of retail brokers provide analyses, and no matter how we slice it, the rents cannot support creation cost without looking for outside concessions. Based on economic feasibility, we intend to operate the property and are deeply in negotiation, negotiations with two Fortune 200 tenants to continue to use the property as an office building. I want you to note that that would come with significant upgrade and lots of jobs for the city of Los Alamos. The general plan and zoning change before us is going to transition this site to a legal non-conforming status. Arrowhead had the same problem initially, a situation where this plan would have converted their site and their long-term use to legal non-conforming. The commission and council was able to achieve their long-term vision for the site by virtue of a retail overlay. We respectfully request the same treatment. I cannot think of a reason why this already created mechanism cannot be applied and do not want to be denied equal protection. There will be no need for sequel review, as what is contained in the overlay was already studied. Further, looking at the EIR provided, I cannot fathom why the city would want to intensify the uses at the Super Media and Civic Center site, which currently operates at a D level of service per the mobility and circulation element, and is projected to operate as an F with this new land use designation. To be clear, the projection as an F is an operation, and I'm quoting, "with delays unacceptable to most drivers occurring to oversaturation, poor progression, and very long cycle lengths." The only reason other than tax revenue, which we believe will be higher as an office property, bringing quality jobs to Los Alamos, is that the city is to profit on this Civic Center site by virtue of this land use and zoning change. We welcome the opportunity and have reached out to pretty much every member of council as well as having had meetings with staff. We welcome the opportunity to present all of this information and discuss, and would like you to reconsider this zoning change.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the, uh, the zone change and to move this forward to the city council.
I'll second that.
I have motion and a second. I'd like to open it up for some discussion. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
How does this site vary from the other one, or do we give the overlay?
Super Media was for sale, Super Media was in the middle of transitioning, it was an apples and oranges comparison, as you very well know. There was a long-term tenant in one property, a short-term tenant in another. Not looked at in the same way by the commission or the council at the time.
Should it be?
No.
Why?
There, there was no, when we chose the opportunity sites, they were opportunity because we saw the potential for a change of use. And we saw the potential for a change of use on the neighboring site. And that's why we chose the list of 10 opportunity sites, and we reviewed them, the commission participated in all those reviews, and there was clear indication of support for the change on this property, and there was a clear indication of allowing Arrowhead to stay. Yeah.
Question, comments?
I would just reinforce what, um, Mr. Mendoza just said, I'll just add a little to it. I think we all recognize, we were looking at the opportunity for the revenue, sales tax revenue, that seemed to make, that site seemed to make sense as a retail use all along Cotella, running along Cotella, and we chose to, uh, recommend a zone change. On the other hand, with, of course, we're rehashing a little here, on the other hand, with, um, Arrowhead, in my opinion, we should have done the same thing and not have done the overlay, but we didn't, okay? For all the reasons that were elicited about how, how we didn't want to send a message, et cetera, et cetera, uh, I felt that we should have done the same thing and not overlaid the, uh, the area, just go ahead and make the zone change, leave, leave, uh, Arrowhead there as a non-conforming use, and then if ever they went out, then we would have that location as well. That wasn't the decision of the commission, and that, that's how we are, that's how, that's where we are right now. So that, that rehashing all of it, uh, that's where, that's how we got there. Just to give you the difference between the two sites.
Steve, if there's going to be legal non-conforming to make the change, is the biggest issue resale? Like it'll be harder to sell? Because then it would no longer be legal if the building sold? Cause Lincoln might not hold on to the building for, you know?
Yeah, they could flip it tomorrow. I mean, they may not be the long-term user or owner of the property. The, uh, there's different reasons why people don't want to be in a category of illegal non-conforming use, and that is up to their lenders, their money people. I can't really speak for an applicant about that, um, but, um, only they can, and I think they've stated their case, and I think they'll continue to state their cases as this goes to the city council, and I would rather them have that forum to do that.
I'll just concur with Director Mendoza, I totally agree, and this is a different situation, totally different situation. This has been vetted for well over a year now with this site, and I think that the process has come all the way to the point where this needs to go to the city council now, and if there's, if they have a change, then they have a change, but I think we've, we've fully discussed this for a long time, and it's, we're, we're ready to move on.
Any other comments? All right, uh, with that, I have a motion on the table, uh, I will, with no other motion, I will call for a vote on the existing motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Was that an aye to oppose?
No, that was not.
It was a delay.
Uh, motion carries. Now we'll move on to item 8A, item from the community development director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. During our April 22nd meeting, Commissioner Sol Focanek proposed having commercial property leases on file with the city. The staff report provides a venue for discussing the items and seeks consensus of the commission before staff and the city attorney devote resources to researching this process. And this is the way we would bring all things to you introduced at a commission meeting, we'd bring it to you, make sure there's a consensus to talk about it, and then we'll talk about it. And with that, I think we can turn it over to Commissioner Sol Focanek.
Well, I think I made the record last time about why I thought this might be a good idea. It was in lieu of a gen item that was presented to us, and there were some concerns about how much the property owner knew about what the business owner was going to do. And I'm at a loss here because there was a slight discussion, since this was not a genized item, we had a discussion after the meeting, myself and council, and I can't remember what, uh, what was, uh, what the end result was, but I remember that there were some points brought up that I hadn't thought through, and I think they were brought up by Mr. DeBolt and maybe council also, so if you can remember what you proposed that might either change this proposal that I performed or, or modify it.
I think there, one, there's a practical problem of simply storage to have every commercial lease. Two, it puts the city in an awkward position that somebody may say, "Well, city, you knew what we were doing here." You know, if we go find out like a CrossFit or something's in the wrong place, well, you had the lease on file, you knew it was, you should have known it was in the wrong place, you're stopped from now changing it, and we don't want to be responsible for reviewing those types of things. There also may be some privacy concerns, when we hold documents, they're. When we hold documents, they're public records. And I can't see that landlords are going to want their leases to be open to inspection by anybody else. It certainly, you know, property owners on the commission can speak better to that than I can, but I certainly believe that they wouldn't want all of this to be public knowledge of the rents they're charging. So I vaguely remember the conversation, but I think there, you know, practical, legal problems and just in general, you know, what are we opening ourselves up to?
I think, I think that was the issue that you may be aware of, the privacy issue. But couldn't we limit it to maybe the CCNRs or things of that nature, which don't have to deal with transaction fees, contractual language, in the sense that like this project here, I don't?
Well, generally, on CCNRs, the city always approves the CCNRs before they are recorded. And as a document that's recorded, we can always get access to them.
I don't know what drill I'm on with that.
Well, this dovetails into, I seem to remember a little bit about it, the privacy issue being one of it. But I think what, what might have started this or had, was the, the, it had to do with the water safe approval. And the, there was a question about the swimming pool being filled in when the tenant vacated the property. And that, that was going to be a condition of the approval, in the, being a condition of the approval. And, and staff had raised that, and the question came up, well, that should be between the landlord and the tenant. And come to find out that it was between the landlord and the tenant, it was addressed in the lease, that the tenant had to return the property when they vacated to its present condition, which would mean to fill in the pool and do whatever. And that the staff had had a copy of the lease, but we didn't. Okay? It was not in our staff report. Okay? So, and I think that's kind of where the getting copies of leases, I mean, my, my feeling was is that anything that comes before us, we should have all the same information that the staff has, you know? Frankly, I'd like to even see the application all the way through so that we have all of the information, just as staff does. And then if there, if we have a question, in reading the, in reading the reports and we have a question about, well, yeah, that's a legitimate concern about, about filling in the pool or restoring property, had that been in there, we could have flipped right through it, seen that it was already addressed. And then that either would or would not have been, you know, involved in the decision-making process. I think that started it. Okay? I think that was kind of the catalyst for it, and it might have morphed into, well, maybe we ought to have all the leases. That's kind of the way I, I seem to remember it.
I didn't keep my notes, so I'm at a loss. I can't remember.
But I don't think, I don't think we should keep all the leases.
I heard you were going to withdraw your request.
Could I make a suggestion, though, a little bit off of what Art's saying here and my dementia friend here?
I'm right there, too.
There is a good comment that you made, and I don't think that we should have everything because that's a lot that they go through. But it might be nice just to bring in a book that has enough information that if we need to look up something on the spot and you don't have it, I mean, I know that there isn't a project that doesn't come in that's not going to be volumes, and we're not going to have that kind of time. And by printing that much, it's going to just take tons of paper, which costs money. It might be nice just to have the book brought in. I know that we keep it here and have it available if we have a question like that, that comes up on leases or something like that. That might make it a little easier.
This is a great conversation, actually. Tom usually has the case file with him on most applicants, but we could always do whatever the direction of the commission is. I mean, it's just copying pages.
Let me, can I ask a question? This is not a public hearing, this is a commission report.
This is your chance to talk, yeah.
Well, okay. So if we're going to go down that road, who decides which applications come, get developed? In other words, if somebody comes to the, to the city and says, "I want to put a Whole Foods in this property," at what point is that, is there a decision made to, to develop that application? And are there ever applications that are basically dismissed at a very early point? And who makes that decision? And I just don't know how that, I don't know how that works. I don't know how it goes from application to your staff fully developing it and investing time and then ultimately coming to us. And what properties that may have been presented to the city that we never see?
Yeah, there are, there are very few you don't see because an intensification of a property, adding square footage of a property specifically states that it's subject to site plan review. So the code is what we follow when we look at a set of blueprints, lack, you know, a document like that. Someone will bring a document like that in to us, and they'll ask, "What approvals are necessary?" And we'll say, "Well, it's new development, it's site plan review. It's additional development, it's site plan review. It's an interior remodel, probably not site plan review." And then there's some times where I will make a decision and say, "No, I'm denying it at staff level because it should go to the commission because I specifically don't think that the code allows me that kind of flexibility." Because part of going to the commission means the public gets an opportunity to see it. And then it's publicly noticed, and the public is given the opportunity to vet their concerns in a public forum. If I wield too much authority in saying, "Doesn't go to the commission," I take that risk of taking the public out of that opportunity. And I personally don't like doing that. So there's a lot of things there where somebody can ask me to kind of mitigate a dispute, and I could say, "No, I'm going to take that one to the commission. Let the commission chime in on that."
My question is more focused on, what if they?
Go, restate your question. I think I know.
Well, if they, I'm going to just pull somebody out of there, like a Whole Foods comes in and says, "We want to build on that blue web property." Could that be, at the counter level, be denied? Or does that have to be vetted and?
Basically, and now I'm speaking not just Los Alamitos, but in general, cities, you can't turn down an application. If somebody wants to pursue an application, file the paperwork, pay their fees, the city has to process that application. So it's really developer-driven as to what comes before you. Now, a smart developer is going to talk to staff, and staff may say, "Look, that's an R1 zone. You can't put a market there. Or if you want to put a market there, you need a general plan amendment and a zone change and a site plan review." And I don't think there, you know, nobody's going to ever do that because we just changed our general plan. A smart developer may say, "Got it. Okay, I'm going to look for another site." But should they choose to go forward? Then staff has to bring that forward to you regardless of what staff's recommendation is, whether staff thinks it's a good project or not. It is, you know, it is completely developer-driven as to what comes before you. They, they apply, they pay, we process.
Yeah, one of the things we struggle in is many times they want to know how the commission's going to feel. We can't give that to them. We can't gift wrap them a predetermined decision. We said the seven of those will decide the merits of your case. We will provide a recommendation, and we can give them a hint of what that recommendation would be, but the seven of you get to make that decision, not us. We make a recommendation to you guys.
I'm good. Okay. There's nothing else? I have something else.
We do need, even though it's not a public hearing item, if the public wishes to comment on the item before we move on, they have an opportunity to do so.
I think Art's.
I have one other kind of the follow, follow on to that. And Steve and I, and I have had this discussion before. Every now and then, we have a project that comes before us that is, and the only one that I can think of is the CVS. I mean, I'll use that as the CVS pharmacy over here. Were you, were you here then?
I came in right after it kind of was too late to pull back.
All right, okay.
Yeah. They had already made the determination that it was to be fronted on the Boulevard.
Yeah, well, in that, in that meeting, and I don't know if you remember, in that meeting, we all took a look at the CVS and, and those of us that were on the commission then said, "Why is it there?" I mean, I think Will, did you bring it up? I think you, you brought, you said, "Why are the, why is it in the front?" And I said, "If you want to, if you want to say that, I'm right behind you on that." And, and you did. And I think to a member of the commission, we all wondered, "Why, why, why did they keep that old building? And why didn't they just demo it and put a, set it back and put a new one and do that?" And the applicant was, "That's, staff said that that would never pass. That's exactly what we wanted to do to begin with." Talk to the wrong person. I mean, you know, we, if you want to go back and do it, they didn't want to start over. It had taken them so long to get through the process. I mean, they were just completely worn out, but.
They went through two owners, remember?
Right. It seems to me that when you have projects like that, that they all, it would, it would pay to have, have it come to us either like just as a rough idea or a, maybe a non-scale, you know, site plan. This is what we want to do. These are some ideas. This location, that location, this, are you on board with that before we spend a lot of money in, in developing a full package? Same way with the guy who wanted to do the hundred and some odd apartments over on, on the Boulevard over there. I mean, probably could have come to us with just the idea in a, in a general and probably would have been told no early on, rather than go through a, spend a hundred thousand or whatever he spent in environmental work or whatever, whatever he did. And so, I mean, I'm just throwing that out rather than.
Is there, is there any mechanism in place to facilitate something like that? I mean, I don't think that there is.
Generally, city attorneys, we don't like that because you run into due process and predetermination issues that you're making a predetermination before you've had your environmental review and public hearing and public input on it. And it starts to get dicey then if there's denial and then there are challenges. Matter of fact, city attorneys have a listserv where we communicate these things, and this has been a topic of recent discussion and people raising concerns, can you vet a project before it actually comes up from hearing, for hearing? And there certainly are legal concerns about that. And I certainly understand the need, and maybe there's, well, even if you had an ad hoc committee, then you could be foreclosed from participating because you've predetermined the issue, which you're not allowed to do as a, as one of the members who's just hearing and deciding the matter. So that, that's the two cents from city attorney's chair on that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I get what you're saying, Art, in a, in a perfect world, right? But it's challenging to make a determination on something if we don't know specifically what the ask is. And we don't know specifically what the ask is unless somebody takes the time and effort to.
Say like a building design or something like that. Even thinking of the, of the, of Poyaloco, you know, they're going to do a renovation, and they want to come in with a design. And, and if, if, if nothing else, just a rendering, you know, here are three, you know, any one of these, before we actually come in and, and proceed.
Yeah, I think there's some things like that that are a little more, that are a little more subjective, right?
Yeah.
Other things, I mean, that's really what the code is. It says, "Hey, you can build this here, and it can be this tall, and it has to be this far away from this and that." And they can do whatever they want within those boundaries and then, and then, you know? But I think it's a challenging.
All right.
But we've also changed, remember the housing project over here on Sausalito? They were doing a cottage look, and now they're a Spanish motif. So we have that ability.
Understand that.
Mine was deeper than that, though. My question was because long ago, I had an idea to get rid of Sausalito and raise those buildings to the south and make that one big parcel. And I spoke with the property manager of that site to the south at an informal meeting, I think it was, or general plan, and I presented that to her, and she said, "We want," she said, "We, the management company, wanted to do that, but it, but it was never accepted." And I was wondering why or who didn't accept it or why it wasn't accepted. That's why I was asking that question, what goes forward. But I guess it's developer-driven, and they decided not to pursue it.
The, the city attorney's recommending we move, we continue the conversation, but move to the section under commissioner reports.
Don't you have power?
Because you've exhausted that other topic.
But will we do, going to 8B?
Yeah, we will. We'll skip 8B and go back to 8B.
Just because if we're under the topic of commercial property leases, we've kind of wandered away, and we'll make sure we're not stepping on Brown Act issues.
Okay, so we're, we're done with the 8B, with the commercial property leases item?
Yeah. Yeah. And to keep everyone straight and narrow, we're moving over to commissioner comments to continue this conversation.
Okay, what about your, your recommendation to get public comment?
Oh, right. If there was anybody first, before we move away from 8B, if there's somebody who wants, whatever, that, that the.
So is there anyone here that would like to comment on item 8A, where we're discussing about commercial property leases? If so, you could come forward. All right, I see no one come forward, so we'll move on. We're going to skip over 8B for now and continue our discussion here under commissioner reports. Or?
And again, this is really more of a report to raise an issue, not to have a full commission discussion. That should be agendized, just like we just agendized the commercial lease site to stay within the Brown Act.
Okay, so is this?
How about if I pose it as a question?
What is your question?
Okay, the question is, why, okay, no one. They changed all the designations of lots in the area which we, the R3, which we talked about tonight, to legal nonconforming about 15, 20 years ago. What benefit is it to the city to maintain that designation if all the lots fit that designation? Why?
Oh, the lot sizes.
But why do we maintain that designation? And why don't we just basically just determine that that lot size is now conforming? And I have a question that dovetails off that one, but it's kind of specific to that other property, so maybe it's not appropriate.
Let, let me slow down, make sure Lisa's on board. Do you understand what he's saying? In the R3 area, there's some lots that aren't as wide as required or deep as required or has the square footage that's required. So that's what Victor's asking.
Right, but, but to.
Any zoning.
But to make it.
These are a lot, they're, almost all of them over there are of that size.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
Let me clarify. In 2000, it was either 2001 or 2000, maybe 2003, might have been just after, either just after I went off the council or whatever. The standard lot size in Los Alamitos is 49 and a half feet on an interior lot, mainly over in that area. Okay? Corner lots were, I think, 65 feet or somewhere, somewhere in that range there. That was, that was a buildable lot, okay? That was changed by the, for what reason? I think it had to do with density, they're trying to reduce density. Basically, they said, "Now, a legal lot is going to be 50 feet," was, was it 50? Or 50, 60 on an interior lot.
I'll get it for you.
Whatever, whatever, it doesn't matter. They increased the size of the lot and thereby made every lot in Los Alamitos in the R3 a nonconforming lot.
But any new lot that's created would have to comply.
There are no new lots. The whole, the whole town has been subdivided since 1940.
I can't.
I mean, there, there are no new lots being created.
Sixty.
Yeah, so the 60 on an interior lot and then, so, so, I guess, so that, that lays the groundwork now for, for Victor's question. We now have created, we've made every lot in the city.
Legal nonconforming.
Legal nonconforming. Why? Why not just take it back, why not just, let's, let's recommend to change that back?
Commission can, has that.
I'm just, I'm just.
To change a minimal lot size? So.
Yes, I mean. Yes, I mean, to put it back the way it was and then we, we're not fighting this, this issue of, I'm sure amortization kicks in and all these other issues that kick in when you have a legal non-conforming.
So, can we?
So, that's...
Agendize this and have staff do some research on it, take a look at the history?
Which one?
And, and, and then bring it back so that we can, we can have a appropriate agendized discussion. About this.
Okay, and if you're going to do that, then I would also like to know as part of that discussion, you know, I'm... We've had lots that have, had, had, had been improved. In other words, have a property, had a building on it, a structure on it. Projects proposed for that property, they raised that original structure and then they, and then they built a new one on there. So, that's a legal non-conforming, but that's a, what if you have a property that hasn't been improved upon? Is, is that a legal lot now or is it, now is it legal non-conforming?
I thought that's what we were talking about, properties that weren't improved.
The lot is different than the use when it comes to legal non-conformers. And a legal...
Right, I know that.
Non-conforming structures different than a non-conforming lot.
But if there was a lot that was unimproved, whatever date Art said that changed the ordinance, if there was a lot that has not been approved since that date, in other words, since that date, before that date it was vacant, then the designation changed on that date and it hasn't been improved since. Since it was a, a legal lot before, is it, is the complexion of that lot changed? Because it hasn't been approved before the ordinance was changed?
Yeah, I'd be giving you, I'd be shooting from the head.
No, I'm not asking for an answer here. I'm asking maybe make that part of your research. Because I, what I'm trying to do is trying to, this is an opportunity to talk about cleaning this code up. Maybe we wanna clean this up and, and take this opportunity to do away with a designation that makes it problematic for you, for staff and developers.
Do you have the questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think we're clear on, on that item and staff's gonna bring that back to us. Victor, Victor, you have something else?
And I don't, I hope you don't, you know, agenda isn't asked me, you know, what I said a month ago.
We have to, Victor.
We'll put the minutes in here then, so...
Victor, watch it on YouTube before next week.
Cause I really don't remember this discussion. And I'm not gonna remember. I just, you know, when I looked at this property and I, here's another one. Maybe Stephen can address this tonight. Open spaces under the condominium rules, seventeen point three four zero six zero requires a hundred feet. And under the redevelopment standards, open space, that's private open space. Then open space is sixteen, I think, seventeen sixteen one oh one is. Here's my question, what's the difference?
For a condominium, private space would be on the same airspace as the lot.
Okay.
Communal space would be different. A front yard would be owned by the association, a large, open space.
Okay, so that answers it. Condominium, it's private open space. Apartments, it's, it's...
No, I think apartments have...
Apartments, it's own in common. I mean, it's a, it's a common lot that doesn't have to have a private yard right outside of every door.
Okay.
Everyone has the ability of, there's no property lines on an apartment lot.
It's the totality of...
You can't exclude anybody.
They have access to the entire property. There'll be tot lots and not, not in Los Al, cause we have such, we have sixty-five foot wide lots. But in a normal apartment development, you'd have a public tot lot.
Okay, so, um, okay, I understand that now. So, not the private open spaces condos, this is the, the, the development standards. Does that open space, can they, can they count landscape areas as part of that?
If it's fenced in, yeah. They could have fenced in private open space that is concrete and/or landscaped. Yeah.
In a condo?
Yeah.
No, in, in the, in the, not in a condo, in apartment?
In both, they could. They, doesn't make, it doesn't make a difference. They're just gonna have to meet the ratio of the entire lot, has to meet the landscape ratio as well. Has the, we...
Private space, how can a landscape area be a private space?
An enclosed courtyard.
No, better.
An enclosed courtyard in front of a condo.
Okay, but, but you said the totality of the space.
Well, you have, you have spaces on condominium lots that are outside the private individual homeowners where the, called common areas.
Right.
And many times a landscape strip down the side yard or a landscape strip in the front is common area.
I think, I think in the, in the R3 code, there's a provision for, I think they call it outdoor living. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
Outdoor living.
Outdoor living. So, so out, and, and that's required, that's required to be, uh...
They wanna stop.
Two hundred square feet per unit. Okay, so it's two hundred square feet per unit. Does that mean that it's, what is outdoor, what is outdoor living space at the rate of two hundred per unit? Is that...
That can be all in common when it's apartments.
All right. It's not private, it's not...
Per person, there needs to be, I mean, per renter, there needs to be two hundred square feet of space somewhere.
Somewhere, and that could include a landscape area. Could be the front yard, I mean...
Right, exactly.
In the...
It makes it easier to build apartments out.
Well, no, yeah, yeah.
In a way, we're expanding.
So, is there a desire for a staff report to clear that up? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other Commissioner Reports from anybody else?
I have a question. I talked with you earlier about the stop sign. Walnut and Catalina. Did you find out if they didn't put one or can we look into that?
There's a two-way, but Dave's, Dave Hunt, our city engineer, was kind of surprised there wasn't a four-way. And he, he says he's gonna take it to the traffic commission. To, for them to consider such a thing.
All right.
Cause he thinks everyone else assumes they're all four and it's probably problematic.
Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll go back to project updates, item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you wanted kind of a visual update on some of the projects that you've seen over the last year. You may remember El Pollo Loco, they modernized their site. The Brew Kitchen Ale House is open, they have their outside dining and pretty soon we'll be delivering a bike rack to them. Brew Kitchen Ale House is very excited to be open in Los Alamos and secondary thing is that shopping center is for sale right now. Kidnac, the Reagan Business Center is Canastic, Kidnastics, CrossFit Tribe, Excel Baseball and Champions Quest. That is the area that, off of Reagan that has designated that future industrial, industrial zone that allows indoor recreation or, or commercial recreation. So, this is that first area that's done it. And the property owners take advantage of that and started marketing his property that way. He's actually a city manager up north too.
That was a planned sign program that you saw.
Yeah, you saw that planned sign program. On the other site is the Seven Eleven is open and running. The store next door is vacant. We have fielded a couple of questions, um, questions recently from a barber that wants to open there, but not a lot of activity there. It'd be ironic because that's what used to be there.
Yeah, what happened, what happened to those?
Gary, the barber, yeah.
Yeah, what happened to those property owners or those business owners that were there before? Where did they go?
And Chase is open, happy. We had a, a lot of issues at the beginning with the glare of their lights and getting the onsite manager to recognize the neighbors in that issue. I think we finally reined them in. There's a commissioner in this room that could verify that.
Neighbors are pains.
This is the swim school, you approved that last year. Two four-foot pools overnight, one of them turned into a seven-foot pool. And it'll probably be coming back to you because they changed a few things on their site plan without seeking staff's permission. So, they actually have a stop work notice on the permit for the pools. They do not have a stop work notice on the parking lot. They do not have a stop work notice on the building because those are under separate building permits. So, it's taken them about forty-five days to finally file an application with us showing what the changes are. Because they didn't reveal, we just caught one, then they demonstrated how many other changes there has been. So, that has the potential of coming back to you after we, we review the application. If we think it's significant enough, it'll come back to you. Baja Sonora, as you know, you approved that for alcohol and a restaurant, indoor dining only. And they should be up and running in about four to five weeks. The grease interceptor is in the parking lot now, that's installed. He's doing his tenant improvements now, getting, getting his inspections and he's very excited to be open. The Hulu Studio, still there. Which one's this, Tom?
Sweat.
Sweat Equity Recreation, CrossFit Recoil, Recre, Indoor Recreation, those guys are all existing now. Oh, the, this is Jerry Mark's Auto Repair over off of Bloomfield that was subject to your consideration last year. He was able to open right away, he didn't have a lot of tenant improvements, didn't have to build, pull building permits cause he's just a big warehouse in the back. And this is the back of his prop, oh, no.
That's Vince Leoni.
This is Vince Leoni's Electrical Company. He shares that with another tenant and they built a, a larger garage out back that was reviewed by the commission. Saint Isidore Bingo, that was reviewed by the planning commission and then the city council. And then the planning commission reviewed this. Unfortunately, it's been one of the slowest construction projects we ever seen.
He dies there every day, that's it.
I know, and we reach out to the owner trying to get an explanation and saying, "Do you need help? Do we, can we give you inspections more often?" And he emails you back with a very optimistic tone saying he's got it. So, he does have fifteen, twelve hundred fifty square feet available in two different suites if anyone's interested. And that's it. That's the update of the projects that you've seen over the last year.
Cool, thank you. All right, uh, I think that brings us to adjournment. Waiting. Turn.